Monday, March 26th at 7:00 PM, mostly to talk about the library. For those who have an agenda in front of them, the last time we met, we had a workshop where the concept plan, preliminary concept plan was presented, and I said at that meeting that the concept plan and some other drawings were in the hands of the construction managers' firm, which the select board had engaged to help us with the estimation on this project. And we got back recently, the estimate, the initial estimate, preliminary estimate, I'll say, from the Ledgewood Construction folks for the library project. And there is some news here, it's not necessarily the news that we want to hear, but it's an initial number. The bottom line number for the plan as it was presented was $3,750,000 for the new library and associated site work, and I'm reading right from the face page of the Ledgewood Construction information that they gave us. And they further gave us some information on the intersection work, which is outside the library budget of $181,000, and parking lot work, $126,000. So needless to say, the initial estimate came in quite a bit higher than we were hoping. But in our initial design team meeting, which we had last week, and at that meeting was Pete Pelletier from Ledgewood, Steve Smith was at that meeting, Justin was there, Steve's son, an architect, Will Gartley, Anne Philly, Ben Blackman, myself, Doug Cole, and Rick Bates, and we were all there at the meeting.
I don't think Pete was there last week, was he?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah. I'm talking about when he first presented the numbers. Yeah, you're right, Pete wasn't there last week. We met again last week. But at that meeting, we had some initial discussions with Pete on how we can work with the plan and work with the numbers and make a few changes to the plan to hopefully get the numbers to something where we can be. And we, pretty much the design team at that meeting, looked around the table and all nodded our heads and realized that this probably means, and we'll discuss this later, that the timing of the vote probably does need to be delayed to allow us to continue with the project. I'm going to let these guys talk a little bit in a bit, but I just want to say that what Ledgewood did for us is exactly what we asked them to do, which was to take the plan as it was presented by Steve and by Will, and give us, go out and get some subcontractors and give us some estimates as to what it would cost so that we didn't have any big surprises if we vote to do this thing and then find that we don't have enough money in the budget to do it. And they did that. Now, we asked them to do that in a very tight timeframe, much less time than they normally would do, because we still wanted to keep open the possibility of having a vote in June. And because of that, they perhaps didn't get quite as many subcontractors to give them information on estimates as they might have with a longer timeframe. And that was one of the things that Pete talked about when he met with us, and also looking at ways to amend the plan to hopefully get that number down to a more reasonable number. And that'll just take a little bit more time. So basically, the way I see it is that the construction manager project or process is just beginning at this point, and the initial information we got was enough for us to know that we have to sort of pull the reins back a little bit on the timing. But one thing that the select board heard, I think, very clearly from a lot of people in town, was that they really liked this plan, the plan that Steve and Will came up with. And we are, the design team is going to be working hard over the next couple of months to work with the construction managers and to hopefully make some refinements that don't compromise the plan, but allow us to get that budget number down a little bit. So at this point, I would ask any other members of the design team who want to comment on the situation to feel free to do so and put anything out there.
No, I think you summarized it really well. And Rick and I had another conversation with Pete Pelletier from Ledgewood today, talking about the next steps and what Steve and I need to do next and try to refine. We're going to talk to the mechanical and electrical engineers to try to get a little more detail. And that's going to be a big part of it, is getting detail so that we can make sure those numbers are correct. And it was a tight, we gave them a very tight timeframe to do this. We provided them with documents and plans, and in some cases, it was just a written explanation of what we expected to be in the building as far as mechanical and electrical. And they were forced to try to get subcontractors to take a look at that and give them their best estimate of what that scope was going to cost. And then Pete had to project out when this might actually get built also. So he was looking at, it's probably going to be maybe two years out, so looking at inflation costs. But he did tell us today that, you know, this is a busy time of year for subcontractors. A lot of people are really busy bidding work that is about ready to get going. So there was some difficulty in getting people to put in the time that was necessary to get multiple numbers for each subcontract. I mean, even just simple things like somebody being on vacation during the week and a half that he was trying to do this. So I think there's a bunch of things that we're going to look at, simplifying, looking at some options. When he did the budget, he provided us with a list of things that he thought we could look at that would save some money. So the big thing is, is we just need some time to do it.
And it's important to remember that this is kind of a normal part of the process. You know, you kick out an idea, you have in your head everything you think it's, you want in the project, and then you start to look at how much it's, all those things are going to cost, and then it's, the natural thing is to say, okay, maybe it's more than we want to spend, and how, what things can we do, what things can we move around and modify to some extent and get the price in at a range that makes sense to us. I mean, the challenge is that you don't want to make so many modifications that the building that everybody seems, that most everybody seems to be supportive of, doesn't change so much that you start losing support for that building. So, you know, we're looking at a bunch of different things that may not affect the actual appearance of the building, or the layout, or the size of the building, but there's some places that we are looking at savings overall to get the building to come down closer to what our budget number is. The bottom line is, what we're looking at is the commitment of the town is, remains the same at $1.5 million. So what, that hasn't, we're still looking at that same commitment of the town of $1.5 million. That's not going to be any different as we move forward. That commitment stays the same.
Can I ask a question of the design team folks?
Sure.
Because I think it'll be beneficial for me, anyway, if we're going to have a discussion about the various aspects and ways to potentially find cost savings. In your professional assessment, you know, if we had given these subcontractors two months to work on really good detailed numbers, look for efficiencies, et cetera, et cetera, they're still not going to be able to find $750,000 worth of cost savings. But what is a healthy number for us all to be considering about reductions, knowing that if we have more time, that those contractors may be able to find some, what should we be shooting for? Because I think it's less than $750,000, but more than some other number.
Right, right. Well, and we have put a lot of thought and time into this already without doing any redesign, but just looking at things like the plans that Steve had put together showed a metal roof. We can save $50,000 by going to asphalt. You know, if we went to clapboards over brick. And there's a, and so we need to come up with this laundry list and then figure out which ones of these are acceptable. I mean, there's other things, like we had some relatively, really ni, I thought, really nice looking arches and retaining walls on the Russell Ave side. Some of that may have to go in order to bring the numbers down. Our concrete and retaining wall numbers were pretty high. And so, I mean, that's kind of, you know, maybe the basement doesn't get finished initially, but because of this site, we really don't want to give up on having that, because it's like the town office. We wish there was a basement there, and this site doesn't allow you to get back in there. Once this building's built, there's not much room to maneuver and to get back in and do any additions. So this, the basement area or the lower level is the one area that will be available for storage and future expansion. So we're really trying not to have that be on the list, but maybe finishing it is on the list. So that that comes at a later date, or if fundraising is available. I'm trying to think of what else we've talked about. Well, one thing is like the heat. We had put an option in there for radiant floor heat, but that's expensive. And it also meant that we had a concrete floor. So if we eliminate the radiant heat, we eliminate the cost of that heating system, and we do something different. But we also can change from a steel-framed metal pan floor with concrete to a traditional wood frame floor. We know we can probably save a pretty good chunk of money there. I think it was $20,000 or $30,000 just in the framing. So it's, some of them are little and things that people won't even notice the difference. And then some like the siding and changing from brick to clapboards is going to be noticeable.
Okay. Thank you. Stevie?
Steve, I had a question. I guess I begin to wonder when penny wise becomes pound foolish. And when you talk, and I don't know anything about construction, but when you talk about going from the tin to asphalt, wasn't one of the reasons to do the tin was the possibility of converting to solar at some point? And the other, the second part of that was going from brick to clapboard. Okay, so you save money, obviously, on the get-go, but you then have the same problems we've had with the existing building with the clapboard in terms of maintenance. And eventually, your cost is going to catch up to you. You said you brought that out the other, the last meeting. And so I, those are the kind of things that go through my head. To save pennies here, or whatever, what does that do to the pounds later down the road?
There's no question that if you reduce the cost on the roofing or the siding, it has a lifespan that you'll have to replace those materials. And in the long run, it's going to cost you more money, and it will continue to cost you money. So it's, it goes back to the town office. If you could have spent the money on a basement 20 years ago or 15 years ago, that would have been money well spent, and everyone would have been glad to have done that. So you have to, as Will says, you, we'll have a shopping list of items, but you have to be very careful. If you're cutting your cost initially, that doesn't mean that you're going to end up paying the piper down the road. And there's no question, if you do have the money and you can afford it, it always makes sense to go with the materials that will have the longevity and lack of maintenance.
I think to add on to that, Stevie, I mean, we, some of the things that Will listed are things that we had talked about. And I think what the design team will do over the next couple of months in working with Ledgewood is look at all those things and exactly do the analysis that you're doing in your head right now. Which are the things that we think we can live with, and which are the things that we say, you know, that may be worth it? I had a discussion with Ben at the library, and Ben was really talking about maintaining the core of the library plan. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ben, but I think that's what we were talking about, is really maintaining the core. And I'm sort of there, too, is, you know, as we look at this, we want to make decisions about, well, what can we do now to not close off options later? As far as, you know, not finishing the lower level, we can finish that later if we have it there to finish. If we put an asphalt roof on, and when it wears out in 20 years, we can put a standing steam metal roof on it. Things like that. So that's where I am. And Ben was, Ben impressed upon me, I think, the value of that first floor layout, how much value that gave to him as a library professional and how the library was laid out. And, you know, yeah, can we cut some of the stuff from the outside, maybe some of the terraces or something? They all look great, but there is a cost to them. But I think what Ben was trying to tell me was that that core was really important to him, and I'll let Ben chime in and correct me if I'm wrong or anything there.
No, I mean, the layout, the layout and the design we've got, it's a good library. It's a really good library. And I don't want to see, you know, I don't, of course, I'm librarian, I don't want to see any of it cut. And I think, I think, you know, we're at a really good design now, people are excited about it, we've got the space we need, we, it's a good design. So I think the design team and myself and everybody who's working really hard on this just need a little extra time to go through, see where we can find those savings, have those conversations, and do the analysis that we need to do.
And I want to, I think Owen mentioned that, he talked about, you know, if the contractors had more time, maybe they could find us some more efficiencies or whatever. I want to make it clear that what Ledgewood did was exactly what we asked them to do, which was to price out the plan as we gave it to them. And the time issue is the fact that they normally, if I understood things right, would get prices from a half a dozen subcontractors in each area, and because of the short time, they were only able to get, in some cases, one or two, maybe sometimes three. So the value of the time would have been for them to get more estimates and to be able to refine their estimate to us a little bit more than they did. But the second piece of that is exactly what you talked about, which is the process the design team is going through now, which is how do we alter the plan? How do we find efficiencies to save a little bit of money there, too?
One of the challenges is that Pete and Ledgewood is making a bunch of assumptions based on the information he had at the moment. And as we work through the process, if we can fill in some of those assumptions with actual fact and clearer information, fill in some of the missing pieces that he had, we'll get a number that's more and more refined with each layer, each level of work we do. The challenge is to not, at this point, not get into, you know, designing the building by a large committee, but to let the experts look at the different factors and the different places that there's efficiencies and ways to save money without getting too far afield. You know, I think that it's been pretty clearly stated that we want to make sure that we preserve as the core function of the library, the way the building appears, the appearance of the library. You know, frankly, I haven't heard, maybe people won't complain to me, but I haven't heard a lot of people complaining that they dislike the library. There's a lot of people, I've had a lot of positive comments about the library, but maybe they're only coming to me with positive comments, because they don't want to come to me with negative ones. I don't know. But I haven't heard that. I don't know if you guys have heard a lot of negativity about the design, but it's been mostly positive. So the challenge is that we make the changes in ways that don't affect the overall library appearance and structure and the size of it and how it functions, because then we start to lose votes in support.
Any other members of the design team want to comment? Anne is here. Okay.
Well, I'm going to jump in. I have a little bit different viewpoint on the process, and I'll sort of give you my spin on it. That, you know, when we, and this goes back to the very beginning, when we decided to use Ledgewood. This was on the recommendation of our engineer, and I certainly respect his recommendation. And Ledgewood comes with very good credentials, there's no question about it. And we, as a group, decided that we would move ahead with them. We had a verbal agreement with them. Ledgewood did know that we had a $3 million budget, for one thing. And as part of the selling process that convinced me to go with Ledgewood was that they are supposed to save us money. So, you know, in my wildest dreams, I saw us coming in under, you know, $3 million. So I'll be honest, when this budget came in at $3.75 million, it just really exceeded my threshold. And at that point, I started to ask myself, what could we do to build the library that we all envisioned? In other words, why should we start compromising our original plan until we looked at some other options? And so during this time, I've advocated, while we let Pete and Ledgewood go ahead with the work they're doing, see where they can make the cuts and everything, I personally feel a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in town to look into getting some other quotes. I know that might not be popular with some of the other people up here, but again, we talk about what's the normal part of a building process. And I think any one of us here who have built a house or done a commercial construction project knows that, you know, you picture your dream house, you get the quotes back, and then, you know, you realize, boy, I'm going to have to make some changes. And, you know, again, I think working with some of our local folks here to just give us numbers and make sure indeed that the numbers that Ledgewood do give us are based in reality, I feel a responsibility to look into that.
I guess my only comment on that is that, you know, we agreed to a different process by going the construction manager route, and the process is not finished yet. We still have more to do with Ledgewood, and they are going to help us, and they've already been making some suggestions. And they had a conversation today with the manager and with Will about just doing that. So the board voted for that process, and I think we need to see it through personally.
Well, that's where I disagree with you on that. You know, we didn't sign a contract. And again, I went into this, and I thought I explained this, that Ledgewood was going to save us money, they knew our budget was $3 million. And when it came back, it's $3.57 million, in my opinion, kind of all bets are off. I'm happy to continue to work with Ledgewood. I just want some other numbers to help validate what we're going to hear from them.
Can I ask a question? Did we ask Ledgewood to come up with numbers that equaled $3 million, or did we ask Ledgewood to tell us what numbers were related with the building plans we gave them? Because I don't want to blame Ledgewood for the fact that we gave them a building that costs more than we thought it was going to cost, unless there's a good reason to blame them.
No, Ledgewood said before they even started, when they looked at the initial plans, that we were going to be considerably over. Their just guess before they started doing this was about $4 million. They told us that right from the get-go. And I think what's tough, though, is that we don't have a set of plans. We don't have bid documents to give out to contractors. We're relying on Ledgewood's experience as construction managers to fill in the gaps, which is the whole purpose of hiring a construction manager, is so that as we're going through this process, we don't go astray. I mean, if we designed this building, got construction documents done, and we put it out to bid, we would have spent all of that design money for naught, because we would have found out we were considerably over. So I think the tough thing about what Doug is recommending is that we would have to do a lot more work in order to be able to put it out to a bunch of people and really get apples-to-apples fair numbers. I mean, when we did this, there was some pretty significant differences in some of the sub-numbers that he got. And so he had to sit down, he had to call Steve and I, he had to look at those numbers and say, okay, I got two bids for earthwork. There was a considerable difference between them. The plans are pretty complete. The two earthwork contractors do a lot of work around here. Why is there such a difference? And what number should I really carry? And so I think just by, if we, we can, we could do what Doug is saying, but we're just going to get numbers that are going to be all over the place. They're all still going to be more than $3 million, I can guarantee you that.
And so my follow-on question is, because I'm not opposed to, I mean, more numbers from different contractors to get a better feel for the range is never a bad idea. But again, we gave Ledgewood a pretty compressed timeframe to do this. So after we're done having our meeting and we give better guidance based on input from this committee to the design team, knowing that we're likely, highly likely, to push it back till November, will we still be able to, when Ledgewood does a version 2.0 on the new direction and the new guidance we've given them, will we, with a more time period for them to look at it and get more sub-numbers, will be able to hit what Doug is basically getting at, which is, we want double, triple, quadruple verification that this is the cost of X and that's the cost of Y?
Well, and the other thing is, the way this, the CM process works is, is he'll send it to any subcontractors we want. So every one of the trades can go to whoever we want it to, to get pricing from. So the only, the only difference is the general requirements, which is all the toilets, the shoveling for snow, the
The inputs that we
The water, the, but, well, that's what comes under the general requirements. And then Pete's, Pete's personnel, or Ledgewood, which is typical of a CM, their personnel is one superintendent on the job site for 10 months of construction, that's what they've estimated for a construction time period, a half-time project manager that handles all the contracts, all the invoicing, all the materials, any of the paperwork. And otherwise, every other piece of the work is bid out competitively to as many subs as we want. And we get to have, say, in that sub-list.
And for point of clarification, the work that's been done so far is not bids. There's a difference between price quoting
Exactly.
Price quoting, and we've heard the word bids used interchangeably here. Right now, we're at just pricing, getting price quotes or price estimates for these costs based on the information they have. When it's all pulled together, then it goes out to formal bid process. And that's where everybody has, you know, that's when you'll start to see more competitive bidding, and people will be sharpening their pencils to get the jobs that they want. That's a different process than what we're talking about now. What we're talking about now is just going out and getting pricing, price quotes, so that you can start to get, narrow us down and get us into the ballpark. I mean, we're a little out of the ballpark now. The goal is, we got to get back in the ballpark so we can bring something to the voters that we believe they can support.
I would, if I could have just a moment, I, go ahead, Steve.
I'd like to back up and clarify some of the numbers that have been tossed around tonight. I have a copy of Reed's original budget that was done on August 8th, 2016. And this is the basis of how we established our budget. But his construction cost for a building that was 9,500 square feet, 9,600 square feet, his budget, which was prepared for the town and which everyone voted on, was a total construction, new construction cost of $2,595,000 with an estimate
Again?
Two million, two million.
We'll take two of them.
Sorry. Two million. Two million, I'll round it off to $2.595 million with a $151,000 contingency with a total estimated construction cost of $3.18 million. We took that number, and the select board said that the survey came back and we wanted a building that was less expensive. If you added in the rest of the numbers on Reed's proposal, he had a total budget of a $4 million project. That included owner's contingency, furnishings, fixtures, equipment, A&amp;E, all the other fees, which we call project costs. So he had a budget of $4 million. Several months ago, when we started this process
And just to be clear, that was for how many square feet?
That was for 9,600 square feet.
Okay.
So the select board at that point said, we don't want to spend $4 million for a project cost with $3 million plus for a construction cost. So there was an arbitrary decision to say, we're going to cut this project by 25%. So we went from, at that point, a $4 million total project cost to a $3 million total project cost. So I interpreted the reduction by the budget of 25%, we would have to reduce the building by 25%. So that's exactly what we did. And just in support of Stevie and Ben and everyone, we've gone from 14,000 square feet to 12,000 to 10, and now we're at 7. So we're down to the bare minimum. So when we say we're not going to finish something, we don't have a lot of library left if we're not going to finish part of it. So the number that's been brought out tonight, that Ledgewood's at $3.7 million, our construction budget that Rick and the board and everyone put together was $3 million total, which was project costs of probably $500,000 or $600,000. And that left us a construction budget of around $2.45 million. So Ledgewood's number is well over a million dollars over our actual budget that was voted on by the select board. So by nibbling around the edges, which we're doing in providing this list of options, we're not going to get close to what the select board announced as the project budget of $3 million. We're over $4 million at this point, based on the current numbers. So we have to be realistic moving ahead as to, we're going through the exercise right now, but there is not a chance that we're ever going to get close to $2.4 million on the construction cost. So the building program and the construction budget and the project budget don't match.
Doug had something he wanted to say, but I'll go after you. Doug had something he wanted to say, but I'll go after you.
Mark.
Whoever you are had something to say.
Thank you. Yeah, everybody was eager for this to be able to be put on for June, because we've made some pretty dramatic leaps forward in cooperating with one another. And I was still hopeful that that could happen, but I'm, I guess I'm sort of mirroring what Owen and Doug have talked about as far as bidding it out. I mean, I don't, I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket. I went on the recommendation of Will and the architect team. And, you know, I wished I'd have lobbied a little harder for it to go out then for three people and allowed a little more time for that to come back, so we wouldn't have to be sitting here trying to talk about going from bricks to clearboard, from metal roofs to asphalt roofs. Yeah, it still probably would be over 3 million, but it probably would be a lot closer when you have three people bidding, maybe, maybe not. But then, once you have three eggs in the basket, you look at which one most closely mirrors what you want, and then try to make some smaller adjustments, rather than doing away with some of the things that everybody was excited about earlier. So...
Owen, did you have something?
I did, because I was tracking with the bulk of what you were saying, Steve. There's a lot of numbers in there, but I was still tracking pretty good. But what I felt like I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, as it relates to all those fees that you were talking about, the hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees. So, what you're kind of saying is, we can nibble around the edges and take a patio here and a retaining wall there. However, that doesn't have a kind of proportional relation with the fees. So, those fees are basically going to stay the same.
No, no.
So, like, if I cut a patio, what does that do to, so I save $30,000 in a patio, is that reflected in some of those hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees and contingencies, et cetera?
I'm using a combination of Reed's budget numbers for what I call the soft costs. For example-
We should be way past Reed's budget numbers.
Right, right.
What's that?
We should be way past-
That's kind of irrelevant, because really, there's going to be soft costs. Some of them are percentages of total budget, even in the, even in this-
Contingencies.
Yeah, like, the contingency is a 10% of the number.
Correct.
At this point, because there's no detail, I think what everybody has to realize is, we don't have anything to bid out.
Right.
We're trying, we're trying to work with a construction manager to have him do really preliminary estimating, using subcontractors to help, in order to make sure we're going in the right direction before we spend too much of the design money. There's no architectural plans. There's no electrical plans. There's no mechanical plans. We don't have something to bid out. We're trying to use subcontractors to help us make sure we're, our numbers are relatively accurate. And, you know, I'm hoping that we're 200,000, 300,000 high, once we narrow in on this. But we're not going to find that we're 1.2 million high. And that's why we hired these guys, is to get us in the ballpark and then narrow it down to where we need to be. Going out and sending this out to people and coming up with all kinds of numbers that are 200, 300,000 different than this one is just going to be a waste of a lot of people's time, in my opinion. We know we're too high. We need to zero in, make some adjustments, and get, take a little more time to make sure that we're as accurate as we possibly can be. Again, the role of the construction manager is to get bids for multiple bids, four or five bids for every single piece of work that goes into this building. So, there's going to be competitive bids for everything. There's just no plans yet.
Yeah, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is, what we received from Ledgewood was not a bid. It was an estimate. It was an estimate, a preliminary estimate at that, based on the information we sent. They did what we asked them to do for the preliminary plans, and the construction manager phase, as I understand it, and Will, correct me if I'm wrong, is just beginning at this point. Now, we're going to get to the point where the construction manager is going to use their expertise and try to help us decide, how can we modify the plan, have a little more time. As I said at the outset, we gave them a rather short timeframe, have a little more time to get a few more estimates and help us to get that cost down. Now, we probably aren't going to get down, as everybody has said, we're not going to get down as low as we might like. But I think in our early discussions, it seems like there's some decent money to be saved in making some modifications without really compromising the core of the library or the look of the building. And I think that that's, we just have to let this process continue on, and I think it is going to continue on. The design team is already working on it, and it's going to take a little longer. I said at the very outset of this process, when we embarked on this at the end of the year, that cautioned everybody, "This is preliminary." Everybody was excited about the plan, which was great, but it's preliminary, it's preliminary. We'll go to June vote if we don't have any bumps in the road. Well, we just had a little bump on the road. But it doesn't mean we're not moving forward with it. And I think we are moving forward, and the message that we're getting from the townspeople is that they like this design. And so, I think our job as a design team is to work on this and to bring it in as best we can. Heaven?
So, I understand that, like, nipping and tucking here and there isn't really going to bring down to where we need it to be. However, we've been having meeting after meeting and workshop after workshop, all under the understanding that it would be around our 3 million budget. But I just heard Will say that the Ledgewood people, before they even were brought on to this, had said it was going to be way over. Why wasn't that brought up before? Why weren't we made aware of the differences during the project before we got to this point where we're just like, we don't have time to fix this, we don't have time to do anything?
We have time. It's just going to take more time. As I said, I said all along, a June vote was if everything went very, very smoothly. When Ledgewood made their first pronouncement, that was before they had anything from us.
Yeah, they just looked at the really rough stuff and said, "Jesus, looks like it's going to be more." And, but we didn't have, we didn't have time. I mean, by the time we had Ledgewood on, we had gotten to a point where we had a set of preliminary plans, and we just handed it to them and said, "You need to price this. You only have a couple of weeks to do it, because if we're going to make the June vote, we've got to keep moving." So, I mean, that's, we just didn't have much time. We were really rushing to try to make this work.
So, what I'm hearing you say, Ken, is that we're going to wait for some finalized numbers from Ledgewood. Once we get those, then we're going to be going out to bid?
No, I think what we're going to, we're going to work with Ledgewood over the next several months to, so they can, they can get some more input from their subcontractors. Like I said, typically, they would look for pricing and for estimates from a handful of subcontractors for each specialty. They didn't have time to do that. They couldn't get the contractors to respond quick enough in the very short timeframe we gave them. So, that's one piece that they're going to do. The other piece they're going to do is look at the design of the building. And again, you guys are the experts, so correct me if I'm wrong, and see if there are ways where we can cut some more costs. The only, the bidding doesn't happen until much later in the process.
Well, that's what I just asked, is after we get firm numbers, are we then going to be going out to bid?
Then, we continue with the construction manager. The construction manager will bid out the subcontractors.
So, we're not going to bid out other companies to do the same job?
No. That's the construction manager way. Now, we get to decide who to award the bids to for every subcontractor. They don't decide. They make a recommendation for us, but we get to decide.
Does this follow our normal bidding procedure?
It's a different way of doing things, and we explained that when we went through. It's not, it's not a general contractor bid. It's a construction manager process. And again, you guys, correct me if I'm wrong here. I'm speaking from what I've heard from you.
No, no.
The other way to do it is to just do a general contractor, which is the normal way, is you just have a general contractor, and you'd hand a bunch of these drawings once, you know, once it passed, you know, when it passes, we'll be optimistic. When this passes, then we pull the trigger on the architect to finish up all the rest of the construction drawings and all of the detailing that would need to be done. We'd send it out to construction companies for them to bid on the job, and they would come in and, according to what we've heard from Ledgewood, that those price, that pricing would have come in way much, a lot higher than what we were expecting. It would have come in at more up in the 3.75 million.
Normally, in this process, you've got the schematic budget, which is just based on very preliminary information, and you make sure that you're at least somewhere in the ballpark. And then you move on to design development, where the entire design team prepares much more detail, not 100%, probably more like 75, 80%. Then we price it again to make sure we're going in the right place. And each, each one of these times, you can bring that contingency down, because your unknowns have gotten less and less. And then, once you get that design development budget and you know you're on track, then you finalize the plans, then everything goes out for the official bid. Until then, what you're getting back from subcontractors, there's no guarantee, there's no, they don't have any liability in it. And so, until that happens, and until you get to the final documents, but the advantage is, is that you've had that CM on board all along, making sure that you're not going to be surprised when you finally get the design documents complete and construction done. It's always really difficult when you finalize the bid, it comes back 400, 500, 600,000 over budget, and now you've got to go back, and you've put all that time and money into the design. So, I think you're going to see that, especially in Southern Maine, this process is being used by a lot of municipalities for that reason. Because when you get there and when you vote on something, you know you've got a budget that you can meet.
And if I could, to Heaven's point, because I, oh, I'm sorry, Cece.
No, I was going to change the subject a little bit.
Well, and I just want to close out, because I can empathize with, you feel like we were working towards something, and then all of a sudden, they continued to work in a direction that they knew was unfeasible, was going to come back with a number that didn't make sense. However, the flip side of that is, could you imagine if we were at this meeting and what we heard was, Ledgewood said it's going to be $4 million. And then we asked probing questions, "Well, where's a good portion of that cost going to be?" Well, they didn't go into it, because they realized they were going to be, so I don't view, even though these numbers are high, and they're higher than I want them to be, and I'm not comfortable with it, I think that we've gained better insight into how we can bring this number down, versus if they hadn't continued through that process of identifying those various financial numbers.
My problem wasn't with that. I don't, I am happy we went through this and we're going through this. I just would have liked to have been informed earlier. I just would have liked to have it been, like, put out there, because we've been working on this for a while. We've had meeting after meeting and workshops. But the first I heard of this was on Wednesday, and it was a bit of a shock. I would have liked to have been informed, I don't know, two weeks ago, when you guys said that was brought in, or when Steve said, "Hey, this isn't going to be feasible at this budget." That would have been nice.
And those questions were asked during those workshops as well.
Oh, they were?
Yes. And it really, you know, begins to feel as though there was a very, a significant waste of many people's time in having those discussions when it wasn't known, and I think could have been predicted that we would find ourselves in this kind of difficult moment.
Well-
Which is not, which I would say is not a normal part of the process, because this is not the first plan for the library. And it's not the first time we've thought about what it would cost. And that's really upsetting.
Stevie?
At the risk of, I don't know, wrath from everyone, what I'd like to do is bring up the elephant in the room. This process has been going on for so many years, and there are so many people in this room, and Steve has been part, going back to the ad hoc committee, read all of the architecture, the first, the first things. In those years, costs have gone up. Steve alluded to how, with all the studies that were done as to what the size of the building was that was initially designed, so all of that, has it come, I mean, Steve and Will have done their work to a degree. Has it come to anybody's attention that maybe what we want done, and we've decided is the very least we can have done, was not feasible to be done for $3 million? I mean, I understand the bond is definitely set at 1.5. But you know, after seven or eight years of building costs going up, reducing this project, reducing, 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 we came up with, because of the way that survey was worded, that people, not only will they not, do they not want more, they want the town to fund, to bond, half of the cost of the project. They don't want the project to be more than $3 million. I get the funding, the bond to be the 1.5 million, to be set. But where is it carved in stone, and why, with everything we're going through with this nickel-and-dime stuff now, and these studies, and sort of bad-mouthing Ledgewood and not understanding what their process was, to me, that's the elephant in the room. We're looking at something that probably cannot possibly be done on the cheap for the, and I know $3 million is not cheap. I apologize to the taxpayers, of which I'm one. But I just feel that that's, all this other stuff about, "We'll cut here, we'll cut there, Ledgewood did this, Ledgewood didn't do that," I just begin to feel that's not the issue. And I don't know what the solution is, obviously, but, and I'm sorry, as I say, Ken, I'm not trying to blindside you or pick on anybody, but I just feel we need to get down to basics and to reality.
I want to address Cheryl and Heaven for a minute. You know, that number, that 4 million, was never presented to us as sort of a formal number. This was something that, at the end of a meeting, somebody may say, "Boy, Ledgewood is saying that this is going to be 4 million." But then we'd also hear other people saying, "Yeah, but we can build it for $250 a square foot." So, you know, yes, the number was floating around out there, but it was not in any fashion that we could put out to people with any basis behind it at all. It was just pure rumor, just the same way the $250 a square foot rumor was. So, it was never discussed among the room.
And I will take responsibility. I didn't send the information out to the library committee, because I didn't want you to get the numbers without being able to talk about it, so that's why I waited to our meeting, so.
Well, speaking as a citizen, not as a library committee member, because I don't want to speak for anybody else but myself, not having it brought up when people asked what this is going to cost, what is this going to happen, like, what's going on here? Why are we talking about the plan when we don't have even a whisper of what this is going to cost? But knowing that you guys were talking about it being possibly more than the 3 million and going up to 4, it feels sneaky.
But we were talking about it also being less than 3 million.
I mean, we weren't talking about that number.
Yeah, we would, none of these-
I mean, we, Steve designed the library with the idea that that budget was in mind, and he was surprised, I can say with great certainty, that I didn't learn about it until Wednesday.
Right. But other people did know about it.
Well, people were guessing.
I think we need to move on.
There were definitely multiple opinions, depending on a lot of factors. So, I mean, it was, there was no agreement in the room, I can tell you that.
And let me add one factor, and that is, and again, even though Rick didn't want to use the basis of the redesign, we had an expert do a takeoff on that project, and it came in at $280 a square foot. So, when we were designing our building, we used the number 300, 300 to 325. So, if you take 7,000 square feet, we thought we were well within the budget of today's market at 2.3, 2.4 million dollars. That was our general assumption, based on, one year prior to that, at $280 a square foot. So, even though Ledgewood might have said initially, "There wasn't any firm number." He was just saying, "I think it's going to be over your budget." But I don't think anyone in their wildest dreams thought it would be as far over the budget as we have right now. But as Will said, you know, there's a lot of ways to modify this price. It's just, I want to make people aware that we're never going to get back to what that original budget was that the select board chose for the entire project. And I think Stevie's got a very good point, you know? Times have changed, construction costs have changed, you have a steel tariff now on China, and it's going to be a different, different number a year from now, dramatically different. So, here we are.
Well, and as I say, as I go down the agenda, we've sort of discussed the ways to amend the preliminary concept plan, to reduce the budget. I think we've had a pretty good discussion about that. The next item I had was discussion of timing of a vote to authorize a bond issued to partially fund the project. And I think, as I said, when we looked around the table at the design team meeting, when we first got the number, I think there was pretty broad agreement that a June vote was not in the cards. And so, I think at this point, we don't necessarily have to vote as a board, but, you know, as we're looking around, nod our heads, that we're now looking at November as a vote possibility for this project, and I would invite any other board members to pipe up on that one.
I don't see any way around it. But I do appreciate that we were aggressive to meet the June timeframe. Hopefully, it puts us at a good place to where, you know, we- Hopefully, it puts us at a good place to where, you know, we don't belabor this any longer than necessary, but I don't see June as feasible.
Mark, did you have any comment on that?
No.
Okay. And I think, you know, to build on what Owen said, we've got an awful lot done over the last couple of months. There's no question about that. And it's work that's going to help us as we go forward with it. The last thing on the agenda this evening that I put on there was an update of a fundraising effort, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we have a fairly robust fundraising steering committee now, organized now. Joan Welsh is co-chair, and Bill Leonie is a co-chair, and there are other members on that committee, and they've been meeting, I think, fairly regularly now. And we're doing the... Laying the groundwork for a fundraising campaign for this project, and if we can find a silver lining in the cloud here, that this gives that group more time to get out there and do what they're going to do and have a robust fundraising effort, and perhaps by the time we vote in November, have some nice information to provide to the voters. And so...
Yeah, I agree completely with Ken on that. Ken and I and Rick, early on, were involved with helping the steering committee get going. And as they gelled up and became more cohesive as a group, as appropriate, Ken and myself and Rick have all pulled back from it, because, again, the fundraising has to be done separately from any town auspices. And again, though, I think that the group we have working on this is an excellent group, and, you know, I have the utmost confidence that, once we sort out the finances and everything, they'll do a great job for us.
And some other members of that group that are here tonight are John Veman and Peter Ralston, and I'm missing somebody else. I apologize. And there are some others. Bessie Saltin-Salt is working with that group as well, and I'm probably forgetting somebody. Oh, Anne. Anne, where are so many hats?
Too many hats.
Forgot the cheese part of that group as well, so...
Yeah, Peter and Philip.
Oh, Philip.
With the crutches.
Philip Conkling has been, I guess, retained. Is that the news? Yes, so he's going to be working as a fundraising professional with the group. So, that's all really good news, and I choose to be optimistic. I choose to be optimistic about this. I think that we have good information now, we know how to move forward, and yeah, it's going to be a little more difficult than we thought it might be, but I think we'll get it done. And I think that everything we've heard from the townspeople about this project is very positive, and that's a pretty significant change from not too long ago. So, does anybody have any further comments?
Here, here, I agree. To be honest, I haven't heard a negative comment, so...
So, I'm hoping that this question slash statement does not bring the optimism down. I'm hoping. So, one of the things that I love about Stevie is Stevie is oftentimes, and she apologizes for it, but she's the voice of saying what is actually going on in people's heads, and she just has the courage to say it. So, I'm really struck by her question of, are we, for lack of a better term, are we trying to fit a square peg into a round hole? Are we trying to design a library that is not based in reality for the budget that we have set out? And I'm hoping that our optimism will be bolstered, but I don't want you to be dishonest. I don't want to go on a fool's errand on a little bit of taxpayer dollars and a waste of everyone's time to try to make something work that really is not based in reality to work. Can we not massage these numbers, but through hard work by the community, are we able to fit a round peg into a round hole and make the library this community to be servant of for the budget that we've been told we need to meet?
I asked that question today.
But I didn't ask it of you.
But I asked the question today, is it possible? I mean, is there enough, if we work hard, is it possible for us to get all of these pieces to line up and get us to where we need to be? And I think, you know, I think Pete's response was, yes, there's work that we can do, there's places that we can have some savings, but we need more information, we need the time to do more work. And I think it would be irresponsible on the part of the board to move forward with something at this point. I think it shows responsibility on the part of the board, saying, you know what, we're not ready yet, and we're not going to bring something to the voters before it's ready.
And I just... I want to make sure we're heading towards a ravine that has a bridge over it, a narrow bridge, albeit, but that we're heading towards a ravine that has a bridge versus we get to a cliff and we go, hot damn, we've been spending the last umpteen amounts of time heading towards a cliff we can't get over.
Owen, I'll answer your question. No matter what Will and I do, we can't go from 3.7 million dollars to 2.4 million dollars, which is your technical construction budget for this project. On top of that 2.4, you have all those other soft costs or project costs and furnishing and fixtures and things like that. So, you have to be realistic as a board to try to figure out if, in fact, you want to proceed, or the fundraising committee also needs to weigh in and find out whether or not they're going to be able to raise, if you proceed with the project, the additional funds that are going to be acquired to build the building.
Yeah, I can weigh in a little bit on that, Steve. I've taken a very hard line on the 3 million dollar figure since I've been on the board. And I'll say, at this point, I can honestly say that my feeling has evolved a little bit. And I could see the town going a bit higher than the 3 million dollar budget. I know that may start a recall petition out here in the community for my position, but cognizant of what Stevie said and what you guys have said, if perhaps we kept the bond issue at 1.5 million, so the taxpayer burden would be set, if we had a very robust fundraising effort to make up some of that extra difference, I'd be willing to negotiate the 3 million dollars higher. I'm not going to give a number now, because I sort of trapped myself with the 3 million earlier, so I'm just going to say I'd be willing to exceed that number.
And I think that's important for a project that everybody likes, and that's the key, is that everybody's excited about this building project, and if we show it to the people and say, well, you know, now, I don't think we're going to be able to put a 4.5 million project out there and have it fly, that isn't going to work. But if we're exceeding by a little bit, and like Doug, I'm not going to say what a little bit is necessarily, but if it's like, okay, here's what we're getting, because, you know, I was one who advocated for the survey, and I think the survey gave us a lot of information. But the survey asked a generic question about a cost without putting a picture in front of you. We didn't have a picture to put in front of us. We needed that number, we needed the guidance, and we got a lot of good guidance from it. Perhaps with... When the picture is there, if the picture is what people really like and the cost is, yeah, maybe exceeds a little bit or whatever, that maybe we can move forward with that. Anybody have any further questions, comments this evening?
I think it's important to keep that piece open, so I'm glad to hear that there's involvement. That's excellent. You know, I'll just go back to, you know, what Stevie said. We don't want to keep whittling it away and whittling it away until really the end result is something that nobody really wants or will vote for. So, I think we have to keep that top of mind, and I think we have to think about the fundraisers. Are they going to have something that people are going to be excited about and want to give us money on? So, I think all of that rolls into, you know, being part of, you know, that involvement. So, I'm happy to hear that.
Bottom line is, we're closer to having a new library than we've ever been. Maybe not as close as we would like, but we're closer.
Yes.
And I think if there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming, and we'll... Thank you, more money for budget again.